List and NKNWO ninety point one Cottonwood Grangeville.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January sixteenth, and this is a regular city council meeting, and I have the privilege to introduce Rachel and Warren, den leader for Scout Troop Three Twenty Three here in Moscow. These four young men, and these four young men are going to lead us into pledge this evening, ladies and gentlemen, so if you'd please stand up and follow the guide from these young men.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Troop Three Twenty Three. I won't really ask any of you, young men, to get up and speak tonight unless you just have a burning desire to, but we took them for a tour of City Hall so they can kind of get a chance to see what a city government looks like. So, thank you, Rachel, for bringing these young men in this evening. Okay, with that, I'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Jim and a second by Gina to approve the consent agenda as it is, and I will start to roll with Catherine.
Aye.
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 We will move on to item number two, staff recognition report. Gary, do you have anything for us tonight?
Do we report tonight, Your Honor?
Okay. Mayor's appointments, and I have two this evening, but I'd like to report on and entertain a motion from council. I have Timothy Hayden for the Sustainable Environment Commission, expiration at twelve thirty-one at twenty twenty, and Trent Bice, Moscow Urban Renewal Agency, expiration twelve thirty-one at twenty twenty-one. I would entertain a motion from council to approve these two folks.
I'd make a motion to approve the two.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Brandy and a second by Jim to approve these two folks. I'll start to roll with Hugh Brandy.
Aye.
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 Okay, very good. Tim or Trent, is either one of you here, Trent, stand up, Tim, would you come on up, and if you want to, you can address us if you like, you don't have to if you don't want to, but I always like to have people see who new commission folks are.
I'll just say I'm happy to be.
Tim, you're gonna have to come to the.
That way, we're on TV, Tim, and we want to make sure and get you on television, so.
Anyways, I'm delighted to be appointed, thank you. I'm looking forward to working with Scott Fidel and Steve McGinn and the other commissioner, the other commission members to do some good work in this city. I know there's a lot going on, so I'm excited about it. Glad to be appointed, thank you.
Well, Tim, you have a, there's a good group of folks that you're gonna be working with on sustainable environment, and thank you so very much for volunteering for it.
Absolutely.
It's a big deal for me to have the various folks throughout our whole community that are on our commissions, and we have a hundred and forty-four of them, and I just think that's wonderful, so thank you for taking the time to do that for your community.
You bet. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, I'll move on to item number four, which is public comment, comment and mayor's response period. We allow fifteen minutes at each meeting, and what we ask for is folks to keep their comments to three minutes and not speak about something in front of a board of adjustment planning and zoning and/or something that would be on tonight's agenda. Please identify yourself and your address, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Dave McGraw, Latont County Commission, one oh two East A in Troy. Gentlemen, young men, thank you for being here. This is a great lesson in civic duty and being a responsible citizen, and very important part of being a citizen is what these folks are doing here today. They're the ones who set your tax rates, do the speed limits, widen your streets, fix your potholes, that whole thing, so someday, if you're fortunate enough and work hard, maybe you can be the mayor or city councilman.
And we're always looking for new, young blood, Dave, too, so.
It's the first step, what you're doing right now, and that's doing a great thing. One thing I, I got a couple of things I'd like, two things I'd like to talk about here now. We look very much forward, the commission looks, county commission looks very much forward to working with the city council. We've had a great working relationship in all the years I've been there. Former Mayor Chaney is in the audience, thank you for your service. We've got a great bunch of city council members here today. As I was just sharing with Mayor Chaney, we've got some big issues coming up. I'm sure you've all read the Seringa Trail Accord will be closing very soon. It's gonna impact absolutely a county, and whether you like it or not, it's gonna impact the city, and we need to have a very close working relationship to make that all. There's gonna be lots of different solutions, there's gonna be lots of pieces to the puzzle to try to fix that and make that better. There's a lot of people out there who are gonna need a lot of help from a lot of different areas, so. Another thing I'd like to do tonight, oh, first, I'd like to say Mark Solomon, former Commissioner Mark Solomon, great to see you, I haven't seen you in a long time. I'd like to introduce to everybody Tony Johnson. As you all know, Commissioner Walser's decided to retire this year. There's been a couple of people throwing their hat in the ring to replace Commissioner Walser. One of those is Tony Johnson, third generation, third generation Latont County resident. At this point, I'd like to have Tony come on up and maybe speak a little bit for himself, Mr. Mayor, with your permission.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Dave.
No campaigning, I understand that, but.
Come on up, Tony, he's been an old hand that's been around here forever, anyway.
Anyway, thank you, guys, for having me. Boys, you're gonna get mentioned here in a minute. Anyway, I am Tony Johnson, I am running for the Latont County Commission, First District, been a resident of Latont County for four generations, goes back to the turn of century. My great-grandfather was a stowaway kid, he was twelve, stow weighed on a boat, rode over, ended up being cabin boy, did that for a few years, eventually came into the Dakotas from there, came into Latont County, and that's history. Anyway, I used to do what you guys did. Back in the nineties, I was on Moscow City Council from ninety-four to two thousand, and it was that experience that kind of, that drove me to want to run for county commission. You guys know, as elected officials, you end up with a passion for what you're doing, you're just not up here for show. You really end up loving your job. As silly as it speaks, you take a lot of crap from a lot of people, but you really end up loving that job, and there's a passion there. That passion doesn't go away. That's why I'm serving on the Planning Commission up at Latont County, I've been there for five years, and when I made my decision to run, it's this all-important question, why? Why are you running for a job that people kind of abuse you? Well, I gave a really simple answer, I want to. There is a passion there for it. It just does not go away. When I was on the council, you learn that the R and Ds beside our names go away. Pretty soon, you get a single focus for what you're doing for the community. We were up here to serve our community, and that's, I want to do that again. And I learned as a council member, it's not one person's agenda that's gonna do the project. It takes a council, it takes staff, it takes community people, you guys know this, to get a project done. And I just kind of want to go through a little history of what we did. It's not what I did as a council member, but it's what we done under Mayor Giddius and under Mayor Comstock. Some of those accomplishments was a waste transfer station out on the Troy Highway. We did the recycle center, we upgraded the wastewater treatment plant, all of those benefit the county and the city. Another really fun improvement we did was Ulturnus Business Park. We lead the foundation work for that, with private development and city help, we got Ulturnus up and running. Mountain View, I'm seeing Third Street out there. We took Mountain View, we widened it, we put sidewalks, curbs, bike lanes, made it a safer street. And the one that I really enjoyed was the swimming center, the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center. You boys have been there, I would imagine. What happens when you're on council, I see, is that you affect generations to come. What we did back in the nineties, those boys are enjoying. You can hear it with the screams and the holler and the parties and the picnics that the families have. That's why I want to do what I'm doing again. I want to benefit the county in a different capacity, but I want to bring that back to these young men. They're gonna inherit the county, and I want to see it move in a forward direction and just to build just some camaraderie among the, among the small cities and Moscow and the towns. And one last thing, there was one other thing that we did as a council that I'm probably the most proud of. That was hire that man right there, Gary Redner. He was probably my second year in, he was a city attorney, Bill Smith retired, we brought Gary Redner on. Twenty-five some years later, you're still here, I gotta commend you for that, brother. If anybody's had issues with the communities, it's that man. I would encourage you, especially the new council members, listen to him, he won't guide you wrong. So, anyway, that's me, that's my passion, that's what I want to do, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
I wonder if Commissioner McGraw could answer a question that came up at the Human Rights Commission meeting today about, is there a hard date for the Seringa to be closed and for the residents to move out yet?
Well, the last, the date has moved two or three times, June tenth is the last date we heard, so to answer your question, June tenth is the latest hard date we heard.
Thank you, sir.
There you go, no, thank you.
You do.
Mayor Lambert, members of the council, Mark Solomon, seven two two South Jefferson, Moscow, Idaho, also own property at seven oh four East Third. And I wanted to just talk with you briefly today about the Third Street project and commend you for the work that you're currently doing on addressing the pedestrian and bike issues along the path, but also take this opportunity to ask you to think about what it means to be a new council, and to remind you that any budget decisions that have been made by prior administrations or plans have made by prior administrations, unless they have moved into a contractual relationship, are not binding upon the policies of the current body. There has been an election. The work that the staff has been doing has been conducted impeccably underneath policies that were established by this council, prior councils, going back until the early nineteen nineties, when we were first discussing what was going to happen with Third Street and how we were going to move traffic around in this city. But that doesn't mean that the decisions and the discussions that happened in nineteen ninety-four are still binding upon us today. A lot has changed. This is now a walkable and livable city as its motto. This is a city that prides itself on connecting neighborhoods, and despite the fact that previous councils neglected to find another way of getting traffic across Paradise Creek or around to the east side, routing traffic up Third Street is going to significantly change the atmosphere and the intent and the character of the heart of this city. So, I guess I would ask you, in moving forward, in your deliberations on this, to step back from the discussion of going to bid for a bridge and instead take an opportunity to once again revisit the policy and the plan that gives the current staff the direction that they are dutifully following to address this arterial issue, and to hold a series of public hearings in which you can gather fresh comments as to how people would like to see the heart of our city continue to grow and sustain itself in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor and council, my name's Nancy Chaney, I live at thirteen thirty-three Ponderosa Drive in Moscow, and I'm here to talk about the Third Street Corridor between Paradise Creek and downtown. I encourage you to solicit recommendations from citizen commissions besides the Moscow Transportation Commission. I think it's possible for good ideas to come from the top down, as this bridge idea apparently has, but just because an idea has persisted on a map or a spreadsheet doesn't mean it hasn't outlasted its practicality. Pride politics or checklist expediency ought not get in the way of considering other stakeholders' ideas about improving the corridor, whether or not a car bridge is installed. I do appreciate that you're receptive to input from the Transportation Commission, and having sat in on their working group sessions, I'm encouraged that they set children's safety as a priority, that's something that was not reflected on the budgetary line item that included the bridge by itself. I compliment the working group and you for recognizing that such a bridge would not function in isolation and that it would increase hazards and have wider implications for the entire corridor and vicinity. It would have implications for more than just transportation. Moscow's strength, as kind of what we just heard from Mark, is that it's not a place to simply pass through on the straightest, fastest arterial, but it's a place to linger and even to put down roots. So, it's important for you to consider how the corridor modifications with or without a bridge would affect those aspects as well. For that reason, I encourage you to solicit recommendations from other city commissions and stakeholders about this prior to installing a bridge, if one is installed at all. For example, the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission and the Human Rights Commission could address social justice and equitable treatment of residents regardless of their economic status, disability, age, country of origin, or other protected status. Moscow Arts Commission might confer with the Boards of Rendezvous or Renaissance Fair or the Hemp Fest and others who rely on East City Park for revenue generating, community building, tourist-attracting activities. Maybe you could ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at flexible lighting treatments that address neighboring residents' quality of life and the historic ambiance as well as safety. Maybe Moscow Farmers Market Commission and Downtown Merchants have something to say about their well-being amidst more throughbound traffic. As a resident and former elected official, I don't expect infallibility from representatives of government. I do expect you to be open enough and patient enough to truly consider the breadth of possibilities and humble enough to change your mind when outcomes can be improved for the community you serve. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, I see nobody else coming forward, so I'm gonna close the public comment period now, and I will address one thing about the Third Street Bridge. Yes, the subcommittee, there's been lots of meetings, lots of planning with that. Last Thursday night, we had a, here in this very room, as well as the hallway, the different designs for concept A, B, and C, and Les McDonald and his staff in the Transportation Commission, as well as the subcommittee, put a wonderful presentation together. Gonna do it again this Thursday night, five thirty to seven thirty, and of course, naturally, we have got comments from public, different types of opinions, of course, and that's what always makes this town such a wonderful place to be, is because we have so many different opinions of things, but this has been talked about, and of course, we're moving forward, and it will be something collectively that we all work on together, and as Mark Solomon did say, yes, you know, we've got a new council, this is a new council, and anything binding from previously really doesn't matter for this year, nor did it from previous years as well, and from different resolutions and different sorts of things. So, with that, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that would love to come this Thursday night, I look forward to seeing you and talking to you. Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to item number five, which is FY twenty, Local Highway Safety Improvement Program, grant application, and Les is here instead of Elisa to explain. Les, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you. Hey, Bill, can you grab the light, please? So, good evening, mayor and council members. Before you, you have a grant application to consider this evening. This is a grant for the Local Highway Safety Improvement Program, otherwise known as L SIP, L H S I P, which is a program that really deals with safety improvements on corridors within local jurisdictions such as city of Moscow. This is one that you, those of you that were on the council a couple of years ago may recognize, actually last year, because we made an application very similar to this last year, and were actually successful in obtaining a grant for the first phase of this corridor improvement, and tonight, we're talking about the second phase. So, to help orient you a little bit, this is Third Street and Jackson intersection is located right here on the right-hand side of the screen, and then it runs to the west, Pullman Highway, Third Street Corridor, and then you start to see the swing to the north there next to Papa Murphy's, across from the Nissan dealer. So, originally, this was one proposed project, and due to the size of it, we felt that it was appropriate to break it into two phases. So, we did apply for Phase One last year, and as I said, we were successful in obtaining the funding for that particular project, and now what we're looking at is Phase Two to complete the corridor. Just to zoom in a little bit to show you what's on the map and talk a little about what the project involves, it really, it's a safety improvement within the corridor, so it's primarily dealing with pedestrian access on the sidewalk system and lighting. So, all these areas you see in pink, and this happens to be the Phase One section, are areas where the projects will be replacing a non-compliant or deteriorated sidewalk, and also putting in new ADA compliant ramps where they don't currently exist. Also, you'll see these little, you know, blue asterisk-type things here and there, and a few red ones here and there. The red ones are existing, and then the blue ones would be all new within the corridor. And what you'll probably note is the red ones are pretty much at intersections of streets or at the alleys, but the blue ones are filling in the gaps, if you will. So, part of this concept is to put in the historic-style LED lights that we've been installing recently on College and in other places in the downtown corridor, Sixth Street is the most recent, but to put in that style of lighting within this corridor with the intent of improving overall ambient light levels for pedestrians along this high-volume highway route. So, the second phase, well, actually, just zoom in a little bit, so you see these, these are the light locations, the blue ones would be new lights, and then the red ones is where we already have some, and we'd be replacing those. That comes into play a little bit in the funding package because the grant application or the grant itself won't replace existing lights, it will install new ones, and so we've been working with the Urban Renewal District for the Legacy Crossing District, or the agencies, excuse me, for the Legacy Crossing District to obtain their willingness to participate in this project, so they have pledged a certain amount of funding towards the project. A lot of that will focus on the updates to the existing lights that are not currently And the second phase of the project, well, let me finish, but the first phase ends here at the alley. This is the laundromat, kind of on the west end, the printing place and the pizza place up here, and that's where the first phase ends. We will then pick up in Phase Two, which is the current grant application that's before you this evening, at that same alley, and then head on to the west as far as we can. Now, there's a portion here in front of the Nissan dealer that was redone this summer as part of the ITD project. When the state was coming through, we worked with them to improve and replace some of that very bad walk and get rid of some of the drive approaches that are there. So, the sidewalk component of this phase right there in front of Nissan will drop out, but the lighting component will remain, and then we'll be doing the sidewalk and the lighting throughout the rest of the area. You'll notice that we don't come up here all the way to the end of the phase, part of that is, we do have a light here that we're showing, but the sidewalk through here is in pretty reasonable shape, and then up here, we have a little bit of challenge, I think I have a zoom in, where the right-of-way gets kind of right into the sidewalk a little bit, so we're not quite sure if we've got enough space to do the rebuilds in here at the moment. We'll be looking at that a little closer as we progress, assuming that we are successful. So, it's possible that we would extend that sidewalk work up to about here, after that, it's compliant and the ramps are in place, if we can make that fit within the existing right-of-way.
How about lighting through there, Les? Is that where that crosswalk is by the pizza place at Papa Murphy's?
Right.
It's dark.
Yeah, there is lighting here, and there's lighting here. Yeah, it could be improved here, it is something we have talked about, as well as the rest of the crosswalks on the corridor, so we can certainly look at that and see if there's any potential to add something there. A lot of it just depends on the way the funding package lays out and how much we can afford, how much grant we might be able to obtain.
And the reason I bring that forward is twofold. One, people are going west on Third when they come around there, that's kind of blind until they get partway around right by that pizza place, and folks coming to the east is where it goes from the three-lane down to the two-lane, and so you've got this, I wouldn't call it jousting, but naturally, people are kind of speeding up to try to beat the next guy to get in there, so that's why that lighting is so critical in my view right there.
From my education, you know, when you're talking about width of sidewalk, how much do you think you're gonna need in comparison to across the street? I don't necessarily know that you can match it, but what do you think?
Yeah, the sidewalk on this corridor varies quite a bit, anywhere from five feet to as much as fifteen. You can notice to the south, it's quite a bit wider than what's up here on the north. I suspect this is probably about a five-foot walk, and it's just very close right in there, and so it's one of those things that if we determine that we've got enough space, or if need be, we could obtain a temporary easement for construction from the adjacent owner to allow us to get in and actually perform the work, that would allow us perhaps to extend this work a little further. So, it's, you know, it's one of the parts that we'll be looking at, I think the estimates are probably adequate to address that if we are able to do so. Just a couple of shots real quick on the look, just so you have an idea of what we're doing. This is actually a section in Phase One, so the Jackson intersection's up here just beyond the school bus, there's the right-turn pocket beginning. So, you get an idea, there, over the years, the highway has been raised quite a bit with overlays, and it got to the point where these driveway approaches were just way too low, so they kind of scabbed in this little asphalt here to make a bit of a ramp with a little drainage, creates all kinds of problems. Those are the kind of things that we want to fix from just the perspective of drainage and usability, but for pedestrian and for ADA access, this is just problematic. You know, you've got this odd little back slope, and then it kind of slopes the other way. Areas like this, same kind of thing, they've been filled in often, some areas where it's very narrow, that type of thing. Where we can, we'll try to address that. This is the stretch, oh, looking into Phase Two, so this is the car dealer before he hit the Nissan dealer down there, so that last block, and so again, same problem, lots of ramps, no longer in service, been filled in, just creates all kinds of challenges for walkers, but particularly for folks that are in wheelchairs or need some kind of assistance in mobility. And one more shot, looking back the other direction, and that's it, so.
You have a question?
Yeah, what were the little red squares on your maps there? Intermittently.
Those would be where we'd be installing a new ramp that doesn't currently exist. There's.
An ADA ramp?
Like an ADA ramp, right. Either what's there is non-compliant, you know, old ones are just really deteriorated or just don't exist at all, and so those would be the locations identified that are remaining that still need ramps. Looking back, you'll see some others here. The one there by Archer Photography, this is a really bad crossing, actually, no ramps, really deteriorated sidewalk right there, that's a Phase One portion of the job. So, again, Phase One's improved, tonight is just authorization to make the submittal for the fiscal year twenty, L SIP program for this Phase Two, Third Street Safety Corridor Improvement. There is potential, if we are successful in obtaining this, that with the way the funding years work, it may be possible to construct them together into one year, and so we'll be taking a look at that. It's usually, you have two seasons for construction, so if we can advance the later project up to the earlier grants that we have, we might be able to do them in one bigger project.
That'd be great.
Questions you might have?
I just have one more question.
Catherine?
I'm thinking about the walking, when you were showing the pictures on the south side where the car dealerships are, in terms of just ideas, is it possible to continue to have the more narrow sidewalks on the north side that are five feet, but then to kind of help guide pedestrians to a wider fifteen-foot sidewalk here? Yeah, to say like, yeah, yeah, you can walk on that side, but this one's gonna provide, and they're all ADA compliant stuff, but this is gonna provide an easier, a more obvious corridor size?
Yeah, I think a lot of that will depend on the overall budget, if we have the funds to do it, and then, of course, how much right-of-way we have available. So, it's a little hard to see, but there's some green lines on here that show where those property lines lie, and I have a feeling we're gonna be very tight right in there in the back of that existing walk. We can certainly look at that, see if there's any room for expansion, we'd love to, it's just a question of whether or not we can, we have the land to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does the council like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I approve the submittal of the grant request for the FY '20 Local Highway Safety Improvements Program for the State Highway Eight Third Street Corridor Safety Improvement Project Phase Two, with total project cost estimated not to exceed $305,000, with a local match of 7.34%, not to exceed $22,500. Period.
Second?
Second. Well, red.
Couple seconds. Thank you.
Catherine beat you to the punch, Gina. Okay, we got a motion by Gina and a second by Catherine to approve the submittal of the grant request for FY '20 Local Highway Safety Improvement Program for the Eighth Street Third Street Corridor Safety Improvement Project Phase Two, with a total project cost estimated not to exceed $305,000, with a local match of 7.34%, not to exceed $22,000. And I will start the roll with Brandy.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move forward with that. Thank you, Les. Okay, we will move on to item number six, which is Task Order Agreement for Design and Construction Administration of the Booster Station Phase Two. This is also yours, Les, so welcome again, Les.
Thank you. Well, the city is currently in the midst of some of the largest water system improvements that we've made over the years. And there really are two major projects that are involved here. One is the installation of a new well, well number 10. So those of you on the council for a while have heard plenty about well number 10. It is a project that has been drilled and is currently in design for its second phase. The second large project going at the same time is the replacement of the existing six water booster stations within the system. Water booster stations are those pumping stations that increase the pressure of the system, going from the low-pressure system that's throughout most of the city, to then essentially lift that water into the upper areas of the community, the hills on the outskirts of the town itself. Those are areas that the low-pressure system doesn't serve adequately, and so you need to boost the pressure in order to have enough domestic flow, but also to have sufficient fire flow available within those zones. They're all confined zones, so there's a booster station that serves a zone, and generally, that's the only place water comes into the system. What we have found over the years is the boosters that we have are inadequate. They're very difficult to maintain. They're definitely showing their age. Some of them date well back into the 1960s. And for the really major issue is, frankly, they don't have enough capacity for fire flow. So the city applied for loan funding through the state revolving loan fund, as administered by the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, and we were successful in obtaining those to provide some of the funding for both of these projects, well 10 and the booster stations. The first phase of the booster station project is underway, and we're replacing three of the stations right now. And so just for a touch of background for folks, I'm going to show you a little bit of what those look like today, and that'll give you a bit of an idea of what phase two will involve, which is the subject of this particular item on the agenda in this design services contract. So of the three stations, one is the Ponderosa Booster Station, Ponderosa Booster Station. Get that out. It is located on the north end of town, so we're up on the area of Ponderosa. And this is the station here, up on North Orchard. It serves, all this you see in yellow is the high-pressure zone, and it goes all the way out to the very north end of the city. And this gives you an idea of what the station looks like. There it is. Not much, it's because it's all underground right now. So this big concrete box, if you will, with these couple of hatches that look like that, that's how we get into it. It's actually located in the street right-of-way in this underground vault. So it's sort of looks like from above, and when you get inside, that's what it looks like today. This particular station has one domestic-sized pump. That's the one that runs all the time, and literally all the time, to provide pressure and flow to the domestic users. So all the household use, the lawn irrigation, you know, washing machines, all of that runs off one pump consistently, 24/7, 365 days a year for that entire neighborhood. There's no redundancy. This is the fire flow pump in this particular area. It is one pump. As you can tell, there's really no room to add pumps. It's a bit tight for operations and maintenance. You can see some of the electronic systems back here are starting to show age. They're just very difficult stations. So they need to be updated. They need to be enhanced to add fire flow, and the regulations over the years have changed to the point we cannot do these underground anymore. So we have to go to above-ground facilities. So the replacement site for this particular station is going to be on the north end. And I should back up just a minute and say, I messed up my order here. I'm going to talk to you about the two stations in phase two, and then I'll show you some examples of phase one. So this Ponderosa station in phase two, the site we've selected is just north of the Ponderosa intersection, Orchard Avenue. This is the Peekaboo Estates subdivision, so Lanny Lane going through Peekaboo Street. This has all been under construction the last two summers. And as part of that subdivision, we worked with the property owner to acquire Track A. Track A will become the new pump station site. We worked with that property owner and developer in terms of getting the pipe network in place while he was installing water lines here in the subdivision, to get it all plumbed for a station to go at this location. So that'll be the new spot for Ponderosa Lift Station. And just a quick aerial shot, again, the road for Lanny, and then that site right there. The Ponderosa station is today is right at that spot. So, in fact, there they are.
So I got a quick question here for you. That underground station you showed is where that pump runs every single day, 24 hours a day. How long, how many years has that been there, that station?
That particular one probably dates, I think, into the late 80s, give or take. So it's actually a little bit newer than some of the others.
Twenty-five years old?
Something in that range. And, you know, and the pumps over the years have been replaced periodically because they do wear out.
Yeah, I was going to say, man, okay.
So again, just to zoom in a little bit, so there's where the existing station is underground. That was the site for the new station. Okay, Indian Hills is the second. And you heard me say at the beginning, there are six stations we're replacing, but now I'm going to talk about five. And the reason for that is the Moser Station, which exists today, will be decommissioned because we're going to connect the Moser High Pressure District into the Vista High Pressure District and make it one. So the Vista Station is sized to address both. So we'll go down to five stations rather than six. So in phase two, there are two stations, Ponderosa, Indian Hills. Indian Hills is an interesting one. The location is here, so Steiner Avenue is just to the north off the screen. This is the location. Again, what you see in yellow highlight here, all the way really over to the east always, is the high-pressure zone within Indian Hills, and very similar construction, again, underground vault with the facilities inside. In this case, the electronics are sitting up here in the open, next to the apartment complex, little vents in the sidewalk for venting the space. Again, the access, very similar type construction and design, and the inside. You will note, these are clean, and, you know, you do see some leakage here and there on the station. So the staff have done a pretty good job overall trying to maintain what they've got. It's just that they're reaching that stage that, maintenance-wise, are becoming a real problem. But again, the lack of capacity is the big issue here, and that's really what's driving this as much as anything, is the fire flow. Just another shot on the inside. So the concept for Indian Hills, we've looked at a number of locations. The current stations right here where this little blue star is located. We've done hydraulic analysis of a couple potential sites. We started looking at sites up here around this location, thinking, well, can we talk to the property owners of the apartment complex? We actually looked at a site over here that belongs to the church that they don't know we looked at, but it's just on the side of the road. It's just one of those grassy spots at the base of the hill. It's like, well, maybe. That didn't go too far. And then we identified some possibilities to the south. So this is Southview Drive and the Grove Apartment Complex right here. And there's a site here that's kind of at the base of the hill, and this is very steep here, so it's not really buildable, but starts to flatten as you work east. And we're looking at a site that's just where it's flattened enough, it's a big enough site maybe for a pump station, probably not quite big enough for a home. The homes would continue on to the east. So the thought was that, you know, we could perhaps create a site there, pull water out of the Southview Line, bring it up the hill to Indian Hills Drive, and let that be the pump station site. Initial, you know, discussions with the property owners, that seems to be a positive possibility on a location. The other location we looked at is here, and there's a little stub of Alice Street. Most people have never heard of it, but Alice Street is right there, just short, little bit, one lot deep, constructed, and just dead ends at the top of the hill. The long-range plan is for Alice Street to come all the way down to Police River Drive. We have city park property right here today, and so we're, you know, said, well, there's a potential location that we could coexist perhaps with a park and put a site in here and then pull off Police River Drive main that ends right there and come up to Indian Hills. All these lines you see in red would be mains that would need to be constructed with the booster stations. And the reason for that, and this was contemplated upfront, is that this existing six-inch distribution system appears just too small. To try to put the kind of fire flow that we need up in this area to meet the fire requirements, we need to upsize these mains. So all these areas in red would be where we'd be replacing existing main, or in this case, constructing new main down the hill, or down the hill here. So the contract that's before you this evening is for the design of these two booster stations and the construction management assistance to the city staff for these two stations. But it also includes the design and construction management for these water lines. So we brought it all into one design contract. Now, to give you a little bit of an idea of what these things look like, because I know folks have asked the question about, you know, there's not much in a packet about what they might be, so what would they be? Well, here's some examples. The Vista Station, and this one's a little bit unique, and the reason I say that is because it is a shed-style roof that just kind of drops off into the hillside. Due to the location of this, which is up next to the Vista Reservoir, it's behind us in the picture, the fact that it's up on the ridge top and it's kind of sky-lined up there, you can see the reservoir and there's trees on the hill, we wanted to try to set it into the hillside a bit, that's why it's into this slope here, to try to lessen its profile, bring it down, keep it as, you know, invisible as we can, frankly, to, you know, on the skyline for the neighbors that are around it. There will be more trees planted up in this area to help with that as well and replace some that we had to take out to fit this in. So it's going to be tucked back into the hillside, but the method of construction, which is a CMU block, colored block with what's called a standing seam metal roofing, will be similar amongst all the stations. Okay? So you can see there, we've got a one-color stone for the body and a different color of CMU split-face block for the highlights. This building technique is pretty consistent throughout all the stations. Now, the one at White Avenue is much more visible because it is literally right on White Avenue, which is right here. You can see all the new apartments off there behind, and this is, the bus barn is just over here to the left, the dog park just beyond it. So this is the more typical-looking station. Taylor and then the two new stations in phase two will look kind of like this. They'll have slight nuances in terms of color and dormers, that type of thing. But these are the ones that we're trying to give them a little bit of character so they fit into the neighborhood, you know, without getting the budgets completely out of whack on a building. But they are still the same split-face CMU blocks. Here, we've got a little bit of a block accent on the corners, just to give it a little bit of character, a couple of dormers in this case. Glass block here, just to let light into the building. Eventually, there will be landscaping all the way around this to help address some of that. So here's just another view, green roof on this one. This is a darker, they call it a black stone, but it's kind of a dark, dark gray, if you will, with a more of a goldish tan in here. And that color scheme is pretty prevalent throughout. This is a generator. All these sites will also have backup power, which is something we currently do not have at any of our pump stations. And we're trying to get backup emergency power at most of our facilities throughout the city for water and sewer systems. So they look like this. They're fully insulated, they're soundproof, they're weather resistant, so they're designed to be out there. The only time these run is when there's a power outage or when they're going through the periodic maintenance cycle, because they have to run, you know, every once in a while for about 15, 20 minutes, just to keep the gas fresh and make sure everything's functioning. And that way, when they're needed, they turn right on. Just inside, what these look like, a little different. These are certainly bigger. Part of the reason for that is we're trying to make sure we have adequate pumping for now and into the future and for redundancy. In this particular case, there's three pipes here that come out of the ground. These are domestic flow facilities, and so this little pump here is a domestic pump. So instead of one, we've got a second one right here. In this case, this third one is blank, so it doesn't go through, but eventually, there would be a third one right there. This particular station is sized to accommodate future growth. In that particular zone, we're seeing growth like the Ridgeview Estates Number Two subdivision that's not yet developed, and there may be others out there that will continue to add demand. So we set it up to allow for that future expansion by just dropping in another pump run between that, in that blank. And then the two fire pumps at the far end, that's what they look like, much bigger vertical-type pumps, designed to give much greater capacity and the redundancy that we want to have for fire flow situations. Pretty simple, you know, simple interiors, just block, updated electrical systems, of course, and just another view. These glass blocks really help with the lighting in these spaces. The lights are on as well, but they do bring a lot of light into the building, and they don't take any electricity. So from an efficiency perspective, they're beneficial. With the landscaping ultimately, we'll, you know, we'll shield it a bit, if you will, with landscaping all the way around. The Tater Station, there you go. That is the existing station. That's not the new one. This is the only one that actually has a structure, although half of it is actually below grade. You go downstairs when you walk into the building, very tight, very small. But if you turn around from this location, that's the station under construction today. Very similar look to the other. The real difference here is that instead of the darker block being the body, we went to the lighter brown, kind of goldish block with the black trim and a black roof on this particular one. Black and gold, you know, proximity to the university. So in this case, the generator's here. This will be a paved access drive at this location and access into the building. And the interior of that one, very similar. In this case, all three domestic pumps are in place, two fire pumps as well. Lot of things in that space.
I have a question.
This was on Public Works and Finance.
It was. Yeah, and it was great that you brought the pictures, I think especially for people to see below ground. And then we had talked about the water, but I can remember if we, out of curiosity, I had started thinking about security, and did you say there were cameras, or is that normally ever needed?
We...
On the outside?
We generally don't talk about specifics of our security systems within the community, but we will have security on these buildings, as we do on all of our facilities. And so, yes, it is something that is built into the system. I can tell you that we have traditionally not used cameras within the city of Moscow because some people have concerns with those, so we use other forms.
Okay. Thank you.
Brandy?
Is there a projection for, do you think these five stations, when they're all completed, will service all of Moscow for how long? Is there any way to know that? Or do you think another one will be needed at some point? Again, that's just out of curiosity, not to make a decision tonight, but...
Right. The five stations serve all the currently developed high-pressure zones within the city. As I mentioned, on a couple of them, we do have room for capacity expansion as the systems grow, particularly the White Avenue, as I talked about with Ridgeview and other areas. The Vista Station also has capacity expansion capability. We're anticipating that up in that area of Fairview and the east end of the Rolling Hills developments, we'll see further development out into the Hayden and the Kenworthy properties out that way someday, and this, the Vista Station would also serve that area. Beyond that, you know, the topography is such that it drops off a little bit before you then get to a new high somewhere. So most likely, we wouldn't see much more expansion of these sites other than those two examples. And then we kind of leapfrog over another low-pressure zone to some future ridge development, you know, maybe 20 years out. So they should service quite well for those areas of expansion in those two zones in particular. Overall, the life of these stations, obviously, the structures will be around for, you know, 50 years probably or more than, you know, with periodic maintenance and updates to the electronics and pump systems, you know, the internal should work for probably that long as well.
So with the Indian Hills sites, I know you have two potential locations right now. How does it work if it were to be the more northern one that is privately owned? How does that, how do you work that out with a developer?
Anytime that we're looking for property of that nature, you know, we approach property owners and talk to them about what our thoughts are and whether or not they would have any interest in... interest in working with us about securing a site. You know, it varies. You know, some property owners have no interest whatsoever and that's perfectly fine. Others, and we've been actually quite successful at this, I guess, others, you know, understand the needs when we talk about it and generally have been pretty willing to talk to us. Sometimes that ends up in an acquisition and sometimes it doesn't. But yeah, there's, the Indian Hills are, actually, there's even another potential site that I didn't mention. So I think we've got several possibilities there. You know, we're trying to find the one that makes the most sense for the property owner, but also for us is the most economical in terms of what it costs to acquire the site and then what it costs to get infrastructure from there up to the Indian Hills Drive area.
Okay, other questions for Les before we?
I can get one more.
Okay.
With the Ponderosa site, the property that is just to the south of that with the home on it, have they been, has the city talked with them or is that in the plan or is that required or?
The discussions of acquisition of this site took many forms. We talked about a site here, we talked about a site here, we talked about a site here, some combination of this property. So yeah, there were some discussions from, with the representatives of this property and then of course, all of the Pika property. There were a couple of options, pros and cons to each of them. In the end, we felt this is the one that probably would work best in terms of the size that we needed. And frankly, due to the alignment of the roadway needing to meet this intersection, this became a more difficult lot to develop into a residential standard lot, just because of the depth and the shape. And so it actually worked quite well in the end to acquire that particular site. And we have acquired that site.
Okay.
All right. With that, I move to approve the task order agreement with J U B Engineers Incorporated.
Okay. I have a motion by Catherine, a second by Gina to approve the task order agreement with J U B Engineers Incorporated. Start the roll up Brandy.
Aye.
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 Okay. Very good. Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to reports and I will start with you.
My report is from the open house Thursday night, where was many citizens attended to come and have a look at the transportation plan, see this out in the hallway. And then Les had set up this room with both other plaques and all kinds of other information. And people walked around and had good conversations about the design. And I think there was a better understanding of what traffic calming means, which is not traffic abatement. It has to do for the differential between pedestrians and cars or pedestrians and bikes. And so I felt like that continual focus and talking about safety, which is what was driving the subcommittee, I think that was really productive. And then the next one's coming up this Thursday, 5:30, 7:30, as you mentioned. So I look forward to that too again.
Gina.
I was lucky enough to go to the Tree Commission, my first liaison with them. And they are working up a storm. They're working on their Arbor Day selection of seedlings that they're going to hand out to the community. Was pretty exciting to know ahead of time what they're going to hand out. They're working on a street tree planting guide, which is pretty cool. And we're in the final, final, final edits of that. We're also talking about downtown tree replacement and what is a good idea to place there and what would still give us the shade or different kinds of shade. It was so exciting. And then the final thing, they're looking at classes to offer through the Parks and Rec catalog and which pruning and things like that. So I really geeked out. I enjoyed every bit of it and then I went on vacation.
Jim.
I went to my first Human Rights Commission meeting today and the crux of that is that this Saturday, there'll be the Martin Luther King Jr. Human Rights Breakfast. It's not really sponsored by the city. It's by the Leita County Human Rights Task Force, but everyone's invited to go to that at the middle school. And it's always well attended and they will have a speaker. Her name is Nikita Oliver will be speaking at that. So I invite everyone to come to that. Also, there will be on February 9th, a fundraiser for Sojourners Alliance, which as you're probably aware of, had a fire in one of their houses and they've been housing those residents at motels in the interim. But at the Unitarian Church on the 9th, there will be music and food and it's 20 bucks suggested donation. And so it seems like a good deal for a dinner out and some entertainment. So everybody's invited to that as well.
Where was that at, Jim?
At the Unitarian Universal Church, which is just straight up here by the 1912 Center. A question that came up today at the meeting was what would be the date for the survey results for the citizen survey? And I thought you might have some idea about that and I could pass that along.
Actually, they're being tabulated now.
So probably within the next couple of weeks.
I would say well within a month.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that's pretty much what went on there.
Okay, Brandy.
Let's see. So I went to my first pathways meeting. They reviewed their progress towards their 2017 goals and are getting to work on their 2018 goals, which included putting on a yearly event, let's say, public outreach event at Berman Creekside Park, developing signage at that same park along Paradise Path, which is already in the budget, as you may know. Working on planning and implementing an annual bike tour, locating and naming orphan paths, which I think is quite a project and probably a lot out there that we don't know about. And there's also some discussion about the commission, commission's desire to find a way to be informed or consulted a little earlier on the process when the city knows about some development that's going in, that they would, they would like to be sort of advised to give some input that might affect pathway issues. So they're, they're going to research some best practices and maybe propose something or come up with some ideas to present to the city on that. And the Sustainable Environment Commission, their first meeting of theirs tonight. So I'm going to catch the end of it after this. But a couple of things that they are working on, a letter that will be coming to the city about the possibility of solar panels on the new police station, if that is successful. And the mayor's Earth Day Awards, they'll be looking for nominations for that. So pass the word, you can get those nominations to the Sustainable Environment Commission or directly to our mayor. And one other thing that I noticed in the paper today, and it made me think of a couple topics that came up during the campaign when we had a lot of people asking questions. Saw this little tidbit that the Palouse Prairie Charter School is holding a poetry slam in, to tell their stories and communicate their message of hope to end name calling and bullying. And I found that this week is National No Name Calling Week, a week dedicated to ending name calling and bullying in our schools and community. And that is on the 18th from 6:00 to 7:00 at, just happens to be at One World Cafe. I didn't even know it was there. But these are primary age kids doing a poetry slam about bullying. So I thought that was kind of cool. I also been busy doing some of the city tours as a new counselor with Ann. And Les took us out and we've been visiting many departments and the police station. And I can't believe how much they have crammed into that building. So, yeah, it's quite impressive. I don't know how they're doing that, but we've been having a great time getting to see what all the city staff is doing. It's quite amazing and impressive and look forward to continuing that with Gary set up more for us this Thursday and Friday. I have something from Ann.
Okay.
Ann was unable to attend tonight. She sent a message to the mayor that unfortunately she thinks she has food poisoning, couldn't make it and asked if she could pass along her updates to the rest of the council since she couldn't be here. So I will just read what she sent along. The fair and affordable housing commission did not meet this month. However, there are discussions taking place about hosting a series of webinars instead of an on-campus workshop with the idea that these videos can serve as a resource year long and be available through the university website and possibly other sites as well. Planning and zoning met to discuss updates to the comprehensive plan from the Sustainable Environment Commission as well as the Tree Commission. From the Sustainable Environment Commission came recommendations referencing water, air quality, energy usage, transportation, infrastructure and environmental impacts, climate migration and food security. Overall, the commission seemed to be satisfied with the verbiage with some small changes requested. They requested additional work to be done in forming the recommended updates from the Tree Commission. There was also a lengthy discussion on the group's shared reading, designing walkable thoroughfares and about the public involvement process around city planning. Lastly, the Smart Transit Board met today. One of the biggest items of discussion was their upcoming survey, which consists of two surveys of both current users and of the community at large to assess the demand for increased hours versus an additional route. They're working to have this completed within the next few months. One board member also shared some wonderful experiences he had with the Dial-A-Ride staff, specifically how friendly and pleasant they made the experience, which was a really great thing to hear. So that is Ann's report.
Thank you, Brandy. And I just have a couple of things. Last Thursday, as I said earlier, we had, there was a meeting on all the different, the three different routes and great discussion from a number of people. Must have been at least 60 people here, maybe more than that. And Brandy was there as well as Ann and Catherine and myself. And a lot of good discussion, a lot of good, you know, comments from various folks. And so you get, there's good conversation going on. The subcommittee did a tremendous job and Les and his staff did an awesome job of putting this thing together. And we have it again this Thursday, which I'm really looking forward to. And then we'll have other councilors there as well this coming Thursday. And as Jim had mentioned earlier, the January 20th, we got the Martin Luther King Breakfast. It'll be kind of fun because I get a chance to give out awards and it's a good time by all. So I'm looking forward to the featured speaker, Jim. And then just reiterating that Sojourners Alliance, the Unitarian Church, you had mentioned, Jim, that fundraiser. So with that, Gary, do you have any reports?
Some of you council members will join the mayor and I in Boise next week for the Association of Idaho Cities, City Official Day at the Legislature. Les and I and Gina will also be attending the AIC Water Summit. Hopefully it'll measure up to the water summit that we have locally. But we'll be working on that. Then of course, the next day interfacing with the legislature on those types of issues. The Idaho City Management Association is meeting the day after that and the city attorneys will meet on Friday. So I'll be out all week as well. Tomorrow is the transportation presentation by the Chamber of Commerce at noon, I believe, at the Fairfield Inn. Les will be there, as will Tony Bean, Ken Helm from ITD and Dan Gray from Smart Transit to give kind of an overview of transportation issues, which is a great little presentation put on by the chamber. It is unfortunately sold out because of the size of the venue. If you attend the Martin Luther King Day Breakfast on Saturday, we will also have a celebration of life for Steve Barnes, who is an employee of our wastewater treatment plant, an employee of the city of Moscow, working at the water reuse, reclamation and reuse facility formerly known as the wastewater treatment plant.
Sounds like some kind of an act or something, doesn't it?
Steve, Steve worked for the city for 43 years. That celebration of life will be at the 1912 Center. I believe it's from one to three, but certainly all are invited. And with that, I think that's about all I have, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session per Idaho Code 7402061C and 1F. And this meeting will not reconvene after the executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, we'll close this at 8:04. Adjourn to executive session.